Good evening. This is the October 25, 2018 meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. We're in Town Council chambers. It is 7:02 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll, Commissioner, introduce yourselves, please, starting on my right.
Ryan Condon, alternate.
Kenneth Wilk, alternate.
Jonathan Formicella, alternate.
Bruno Mayne, Commissioner.
Ian Ambrosi, Commissioner.
William Porter, Chairman.
Well, Lisa, Secretary.
Michael Riley, Vice Chairman.
Will Agresta, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Okay, and we don't have to seat anyone tonight because everybody's here. Item number three, organizational and administrative matters. There's a draft scheduled for our 2019 meetings. Do you want to make any kind of movement on this tonight, or do you want to just?
We have to do it either tonight or the next meeting. I pointed a bylaw. And I pointed out that the April 18th regular meeting is, will be Holy Thursday. And our regular meeting in July, July 4th falls on a Thursday. So I don't know if you want to either skip that meeting and just keep the second meeting, or we could by-step those meetings and then do the same thing potentially in August because there's an extra week somewhere in between there.
Well, I already know right now that July 11th, I won't be in town.
Whoa, you're that far planned out.
Yes, I am.
That's impressive.
Probably. May 1st is a Wednesday, is that?
May 1st is a Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should we probably look this over, do it next meeting?
Well, it'll take five minutes right now.
We could do that, too.
So it would be May 2nd?
Are you looking 2019 there, Ryan?
Yes.
He's right.
May 2nd, right.
Good job, Ryan.
And 15.
Second and 16. Sorry, second and 16. Does anybody have an issue with April 18th?
It's real close to my birthday.
It's Holy Thursday.
No, that's fine.
All right, we'll keep April 18th.
It is still really close to my birthday.
We'll celebrate.
In most places it goes.
Yeah, maybe we'll have cupcakes. You have to bring them.
I'm bringing cake, no cupcakes.
I don't know if there's any town policy.
Or slices or red cider.
For what?
Because the next day is a day off, so I don't know. I don't know if they close earlier.
Let's, let's leave it on the schedule. If we have to change it, we'll change it. Um, July. What do you folks want to do with July?
Well, not July 4th. What, the 18th and 25th?
We're not meeting on July 4th. Do you want to leave it? You want to just?
Just the 18th?
Just leave it at the 18th?
Is it 18 and 25, or is it just 18?
No, just 18. Or July 11th and 25th.
The 25th would be actually.
So it's just the 18th?
Just the 18th.
The 25th, but that's a week off from the August 1st.
That's what's really close to.
So why don't we just leave it at the 18th?
So no 4, no 11, no 25?
Correct.
Oh, I don't want July 4th anymore.
Well, I won't be here for the 4th, so.
August, September.
My only question is, July a pretty busy month for people bringing in.
It depends. If we have to call a special meeting, we could always do that.
Because I know it's dead smack in the summer, so.
I think the rest of it looks fine. Anybody else have anything on it? Do we like to have to have a motion and vote?
Yes, please.
You want a motion?
Yes, sir.
To accept 2019 regular meeting schedule as drafted, with the changes to May 3rd.
2nd.
2nd.
I'm dropping out July 4th.
May 2nd.
They went 2nd again.
No, you said 3rd.
Well, putting it on the 3rd, off the 2nd.
No, it was scheduled for May 1st. It's going to be on May 2nd.
Just sorry.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Call the roll.
Mayne, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
Lisa, yes.
Riley, yes.
I'm trying to give you some.
Okay, thank you.
I'll let you vote for something.
Next up, general public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the Commission on an issue that's not related to a public hearing?
I don't, I don't know how, what would be related to a public hearing, what would be.
Well, why don't you, why don't you just tell us what you have to say?
And if I have to tell you no. Can I sit here or come in the house? You can hear me, right?
Well, you really should come up and state your name and address for the record.
Okay, let's do that.
Oh, my, oh, my. Oh, my God.
So I wanted to, obviously.
I'm sorry, first name and address.
Tracy Torres, 349 Elm Street. I wanted to thank you guys for two quick things. You made agriculture permitted use in the last go around without requiring a permit. Thank you. And you promised you would deal with the livestock issue just after you passed those, and you have, so I want to thank you for that. I didn't attend the last meeting, but I heard from a few people who did about what you guys were proposing, so I just have a few quick comments on that. You guys differentiate between sort of an unlimited number of fowl and up to 24 fowl. In the origination of the 24 number way back in the day was at some commission or meeting, I don't even know what all the terms are, but at a meeting, someone said, well, how many chickens can fit in a box? And someone said, well, it's 24. And I said, okay, we'll make it 24. And I just want you guys to know the actual number is 25 in hatcheries. I'm actually in the business of selling chickens and chicken coops for a living. So the actual number is 25, and hatcheries frequently throw in extras for heat or warmth or just in case something were to happen to one of the birds on route. So I would request that the 24 number just be up to 26, because for many hatcheries, that is actually the min, 25 is the minimum number of chickens I'll ship. So provided all the chickens survive and they grow up, you know, people don't, people really don't want to be.
Yeah, but you can go to Agway and buy four.
You can go to Agway and buy four, but that was the origination of that number 24. So I just want to state that, that, you know, as you guys are considering the language.
Can you get that box of 26 plus on the all single sex?
You can get single sex, yes. I sell, I sell sex birds. Yep, I sure do. Certain breeds you can get foolproof, for sure, only hens, because they hatch out different colors at hatch. And other ones, it's more of a science, more of an art than a science. I also want to let you know that my feeling is roosters should be undifferentiated from hens because there's something new, a new product that's come to the market called a no crow rooster collar. I myself, I had my, my husband filled the number just before I came. I've sold 12,103 no crow rooster collars around the country. And it is a device that is Velcro and mesh. It's humane. All it prevents a rooster from doing is fully filling its air sac. So when it goes to crow, it vocalizes, but it's no louder than, than a hen. So that opens up a whole can of worms, and I realize you probably just don't want to go there. I just want to say that. I agree with the 50-foot and 100-foot setbacks for fowl, because fowl is a term that encompasses things like guinea fowl and geese, P. fowl, which can be much louder than chickens. So what I do want to propose, what I want to ask that you guys consider before you write, I guess, the proposed regs, is that we add an additional regulation applying to female hens only. So a lot of people, like, for instance, Gale only keeps this breed of chicken. They're exceptionally quiet. They weigh less than a pound apiece. They're, it's really a different beast from like a guinea fowl or goose or something that's very loud and makes its presence known. So I would ask that you guys consider however and whenever you do that, that you move the current 3.1.5E down to F. E relates to something different. And that you change the current E to apply to a 25-foot setback for up to 26 female hens only. The reason for this is that there are folks on Cottage Street and in the surrounding streets in that area and other places in town where there may be a three-quarter zoning, where they can't achieve 50-foot setback at all. And they're really heated up about this issue, and I think they would be very, very grateful if they could come into compliance. And again, no roosters, you really can separate, I mean, I personally know for a fact that you can put a collar on a rooster and you can't tell the difference, but you can't force people to buy a certain product, you know, I get it. But if you would allow for up to just 26 female hens with a 25-foot setback, you'd make a whole bunch of people very happy. And I think, you know, you already have regulations requiring, you know, keeping their premises clean, and you already have noise regulations that would cover other concerns, I think, that neighbors might have. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you. No, no, she already spoke.
She has a diaper on, you know.
We heard.
Keeping chickens in the house, that gives you the 50-foot setback, right?
Gale Bonavsky, 76 Holly Place. Seems like a bunch of men here. Maybe you should have a rooster talk. Roosters are probably the most misunderstood animal going. I have silkies, I have roosters. They will feed, they will act, of course, they'll fertilize the egg. They will take care of the baby. They will keep the baby warm. They will actually feed the babies out of their mouth. They'll actually feed it. And they will die for their family, just like you guys would give it all for your family. And they are probably the most misunderstood animal ever. And you can keep them quiet. I, you know, I have roosters, I have two roosters right now in two separate coops, all silkies. And one has a little attitude, so you wouldn't want him out running around. Mine do not run around. Mine are in the coops that you see at Agway with the, the run attached to the coop. And if you have any questions, like I say, I think they're the misunderstood animal because I think they're, they're great little guys, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public? All right, moving on, general appointments, we have none. Public hearings, none. Site plan review, none. Deliberations and determinations. Item number six, time extensions, S U B 2018-02, file number 1264C, 36 Timothy Hill Road subdivision, 180-day extension request. I believe you have a copy of a, this form, statutory time extension application. State, state regulations, state general statutes related to land use regulate procedures that we should follow. After we have approved a subdivision, the applicant has 90 days pending, forgetting any appeal period, they have 90 days to file their, their plans with, with the town for their subdivision. According to state statute, the zoning commission can authorize two 90-day extensions. But the way the regulation is written, or the statute is written, it specifically says two separate 90-day extensions. There are other.
Oh, so he's asking for both of them?
He's asking for a 180-day extension. There are other sections in the statutes where they specifically allow 180-day extensions. But this statute is very clear that it allows two 90-day extensions. So my recommendation to the Commission is that we grant a 90-day extension. If, if the applicant is not able to complete all of his necessary paperwork and get things filed within that time period, he is allowed to come in and request an additional 90-day extension.
I'd like to also note that it's actually nothing that it has to do other than provide the plans, because this was a reapproval of something that was already approved, so the plans are already done.
If you remember, this, this is the final stage up in the Pepper Street Industrial Park, and there was an approval on a section of road, and then they let that lapse and they redesigned to accommodate the soccer field that was going to go in, and then that fell by the wayside, and then they went back to that original plan that had been approved. They resubmitted that. We approved it again, and that's what they need to file on. So the plans are done. They just need to file.
So why are they asking for 180 days?
What's that?
So why are they asking for 180 days, huh?
Oh, no.
If they're done, 90 days should be adequate, huh?
I would think so. That's why I'm recommending to the Commission that we grant the 90 days that's called out in the state statute.
90.
And if they need additional time after that, they are allowed to request one additional 90-day extension.
Let's do it.
Okay.
We have to grant 90-day time extension to S U B 2018-02, file 1264C, not 180-day.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
No, sir.
Questions, anything? Call the roll.
Mayne, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
Lisa, yes.
Riley, yes.
Bond releases or reductions, S U B 2014-02, file 1254C, Deer Meadow Estate subdivision. A couple of memorandums in the package. Will, why don't you take this?
Okay, if you recall, you know, a couple of meetings ago, this was Deer Meadow Estate subdivision, Whitetail Drive, a new subdivision road. They were in requesting determination of completion and release of the bond, the performance bond. And you got a report a couple of meetings ago from the town engineer saying that the road is, is complete, and you set in motion as per the statute under the subdivision regulations, a period of noticing, which was a 38, minimum 38 period, which is, and requires some notice in the paper, and notice at the property, and notice to the neighbors. That has all been done, the time has gone by, and now we're back at the point for you to, and we've gotten no, we've received no public comment. And there's a memo in your package from the town engineer updating, updating you that nothing has changed since the last time. And so you would do what's called a determination of completion and recommendation to the Town Council for acceptance as a town road. And that would be subject to the bullet points that I put out in my memorandum. And in addition, I have provided you a copy of the draft letter that would go to the Town Council if you were to take that, that action, attached to the subdivision showing the road. So if you're of the mind, you would pass a motion deeming the road satisfactory complete and that you recommend it to be accepted by the Town Council as a public road, subject to these bullets. And that would release, you could also put in the release of the bond upon satisfaction of this, so it doesn't have to come back to you for that.
So as Will stated, you know, that we've already determined and allowed them to go forward with issuing the public notice about the completion of the road. So now this is pretty much an administrative type action by the Commission. So unless anyone has some questions or comments, I'd like to get a motion on this.
Motion to release the bond and convey, make a recommendation to convey the road to the town at S U B 2014-02, file 1254C, Deer Meadow Estate subdivision.
Subject to the conditions outlined in the memo?
Subject to the conditions outlined in the memo.
You?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Any, any discussion, any questions?
No, sir.
No? Call the roll.
Mayne, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes. Lisa, yes. Riley, yes. Next up, item number eight, meeting minutes. Of course, we have September 20th. Porter, Lucy, Ambrosi, Mayne, and Michael was absent, but I'm not going to seat anybody for this. Okay, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 20th, 2018. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any corrections or comments? I looked through it, I didn't see anything.
No, sir.
Call the roll.
Mayne, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
Lisa, yes.
Michael, what's that? Michael?
I'm staying.
Thank you. Uh, next up, October 4th. Porter, O'Reilly, Lisa, Ambrosi, Mayne.
We did make a motion to approve the October 4th meeting minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission, 2018, as drafted, second.
Motion, a second. Any, any comments or corrections? Call the roll.
Mayne? Mayne, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
Lisa, yes. Riley, yes.
Application deliberations and determinations, we have none. Item number 10, Regulation Review Amendment Works Section. Committee Draft Amendment, Keeping of the Animals, RF 1, RF 2, and RF 3 districts. All right. Those of you who went through and looked at the existing regulation, this was an oversight from a mirror that came about in the 2013 revisions of the regulations whereby we lumped pretty much all farm animals into one category. Be it chickens, or horses, or cows, they were all lumped together. So the intent of this amendment is to take chickens' fowl out of the classification with the other traditional farm animals and address them separately. So in 3.1.4C, we've taken fowls out of item number five, which spells out how many animals you can have, and created item number six. The keeping of fowl, all fowl shall be kept in a manner so as not to create a public health hazard or have an adverse effect on the environmental quality of the surrounding area and community in general. Maneuver piles shall be located and maintained so as to prevent runoff of polluting materials onto adjacent properties, roads, wells, or watercourses. Fencing and structures shall be installed so as to confine all fowl within the property. And we took out, originally, we had, you had to have two acres for chickens. We talked about reducing that from two acres to one acre, but then we decided, this was when I say "we," the subcommittee, we decided that we were going to take all of those limitations as far as acreage out of this and go strictly by the setbacks. Because that's really what is more of a concern, is how close you are to neighboring properties, not how big your property is. You could have a five-acre parcel that's very narrow and long, and it would have more of an impact on your neighbor, even though you have five acres, so. We took the acreage limitation out, and then we revised 3.1.6, the setback section.
And is there a quantity? I mean.
At the bottom.
Well, if you look at.
Yeah, I see that.
Small or less?
Yeah. B remains the same. Any structure housing horses and livestock shall be located not less than 50 feet from any property line. Item number C, any structure housing male fowl or more than 12 female fowl shall be located not less than 100 feet from any property line. And we added in, it may not be erected between the principal structure and the street, so we're not allowing chicken coops in front yards.
I just had a quick question about that. There's a property that I drive by when I come to a meeting, that there's a greenhouse on Fan Hill Road where it blocks both 111 and Fan Hill Road. Wouldn't that language give it a little, bit of a hard time where that person could put the, the housing for the fowl?
Is that a corner lot?
Yes, so.
They still have a front and a side.
Okay.
Well, a corner lot would have two fronts.
A corner would have two fronts?
Yeah, but traditionally, corner lots are larger to compensate for that.
Okay. But only because the last clause says between the principal structure and the street?
Yeah, the idea is so that it's more or less to the side and behind the house.
Okay, but I'm, I'm looking at the, because the greenhouse really stands out to me. It doesn't, it seems like their backyard, where their garage is, is on Fan Hill Road and where would, there's a fence, obviously, but where that person could put it and where people like who own properties.
There's just Fan Hill and.
Yeah, so if you take a left.
Yeah, sell the home on that.
Well, well, they're selling their house anyway, but, but if you take a left at the stop sign, right, their property would connect both 111 and Fan Hill Road.
So corner lot.
Right. So how could that person have, if they want a fowl?
So they would have to either go in the backyard or the opposite side?
Are you talking about the store drive? The house at the end of the store drive, right?
No, it's not a corner lot. It has, it has the front property on.
Oh, you mean, you mean the one next to the church?
Right, yeah, behind the church.
Which presently has chickens illegally?
I didn't know that, but sure. But yeah, some, something like that property, because it has.
That's behind the house, and it's also behind the side of the house, so either way, it complies, if the acreage goes away, it complies where it is.
Okay, I didn't see, because you can't really see.
If they brought it, if they brought it to, in front of the, the parallel line of the side, that would not be permitted. But once they go behind the building and then behind the line of the house, they're fine.
Okay.
Let's only have one discussion, please, sorry. So if you have roosters or more than 12, there's a 100-foot setback. Then on item number D, any structure housing 12 or fewer female fowl shall be located not less than 50 feet from the property line.
Can I ask a question?
See, this, there's no limit. This says more than 12.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I say there's no limit. You could have 100.
There is no limit.
According to this proposed amendment, yes.
Well, there never was, that's true. There never was. There never was a limit, other than the acreage, so the acreage was limited, so now, yeah, this opens it up for, in that respect.
Yeah, there was a limit before.
What was it?
Four.
Yeah.
Four was a limit?
Thank you. Yeah, that's why we, that's why we decided five years later that, all right, we have to make a change.
Yeah, you would think there would be something that would limit the number of.
Yeah, what if you have 13?
Based on, potentially based on.
And you don't have.
What if you have 13 fowl?
Then you have to 100-foot setback.
Then it's 100-foot, 750, okay. And then what, a question going back, what, with the livestock versus. And then what, um, a question going back, what, with the livestock versus the fowl, what's the thought process of allowing to have like, you know, a couple sheep within fifty and chicken is just noise? Is that a consideration there?
Well, they're.
Livestock.
Wait a minute.
Livestock you can have not less than fifty feet, any structure housing, horses and livestock shall be located, okay, structure, so they're indoors at that point.
It's, it's the structure.
Okay.
Well, the change is the rooster, the rooster's tendency to noise.
Yes.
You can have, you can have a fence on your property line, you can have chickens on your property line.
Gotcha, but the house, the structure that's housing them, got it. But right now, this is saying that there's no limitation, uh, oh, there is, there is for.
There is for livestock.
For livestock, there's no limitation for fowl.
Correct, right.
At the moment.
So you could have two hundred fostered ones?
You could have two hundred on, 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 on one acre, as long as you have them all.
As long as you're, as long as the coop is, meets the setback.
So I think there needs to be some limitation.
Well, the other thing is that they can't have a commercial operation, correct? Because this is an RF.
No, they could if they're a farm.
Oh, they could, okay.
Well, yeah, I mean, why not, if they're a farm, they can have all those things.
Yeah, that would be different, that would, this is just for the typical residents.
Yeah, season access.
It's, no, it's for any property in an RF one, two, or three zone. It's RF, it's residential farming, it's a residential farming zone, so.
Can't include a farm then?
It's, it's an allowed use.
No, but if someone has it as a business.
You could have a chicken farm outside of this standard.
I'm sorry?
You could have a chicken farm outside of this standard.
How do you mean outside?
This is accessory to the principal use, so if the principal uses a chicken farm, this doesn't apply to it.
That's what, that's what I was getting at, that, so there is an exception, there would be an exception.
You could still have a chicken farm in an RF zone.
This wouldn't apply to that, though, because it would be considered a farm then.
But I assume there's certain restrictions for a chicken farm.
Not in our regulations.
Okay.
But as Will said, as Will said, this, these are accessory, this amendment is to the accessory use in an RF zone. So that the principal use, could be a farm, could be a house, could be anything that's allowed in an RF zone.
Do we want to have a limit, is that what you're thinking?
I'm, I'm questioning that.
You know.
To tell you, we've never had any problem with this part of this, it's always been twenty-four or more.
Here's, here's the thing, that, that there's, it's kind of not very specific, but it says, all fowl shall be kept in a manner so as not to create a public health hazard, or have an adverse effect on the environmental quality of the surrounding area and community in general. So if somebody has two hundred chickens in their backyard, and it's creating an issue with the neighbors, that, I think it's pretty much covered by that statement.
Well, depends, that's, based on somebody's opinion, that's what's considered a, you know, environmental quality and the community, adverse effect, what's, you know, what's the definition of ad- adverse effect? Again, I'm just questioning, this just seems, seems like there wouldn't have to be some sort of limitation.
But we touched that number, that number's always been there.
Hold on, what, what do you think, there?
But it, it, I don't, I don't want to, uh, restrict, you know, uh, what can take place on a farm, or, or, or somebody that has a business that is selling, you know, farm animals, fowl, whatever it may be. I'm, I'm referring to just a, you know, residence that has, uh, these animals that, you know, for example, there are restrictions for a horse or a livestock, right?
Numbers, yes.
So why wouldn't there be restrictions for, for other animals?
Look at that, I'll ask again, what do you think the limit should be?
I, I would imagine it would probably be based on, on the amount of land you have, goes back to the acreage, perhaps. I don't know what that number is.
I think, why would you want that, though, is the thought process, what is too many chickens, like, what's the problem with? You know what I'm saying, so what, what are you trying to prevent with too many chickens? I'm not trying to attack you, I'm just.
Yeah, I, I'm just thinking about if it was, you know, if my neighbor had fifty chickens next door, I might have an issue with that, I don't know.
So then at some point, though, you hit that number where you're going to have the health risk, or you're going to have the detriment to the environment. It might not be the same number for each location, depending on the acreage, it could just be.
Subjective, you know, I don't. There's no more acreage, it's all.
Exactly, but he's saying that he wants, you're saying you want acreage.
Recommending that.
Yeah.
That there should be some sort of limit.
Okay, but I.
I don't, I don't, I don't know what that is, I think that's.
I'm wondering if standard of health and, and health and stuff and the environment is what gives us that limit without actually setting a acreage limit, right? Isn't that kind of the thought process?
That's kind of the thought process, yeah.
I would be more for that than I think the acreage, because again, it depends, as you mentioned, a five acreage parcel, if it's narrow, start putting too many chickens on that, it could be a problem for the neighbors, so the acreage, I don't know.
The thing is, is that's why you have a hundred foot setback.
Yeah.
So that really takes care of a lot of properties that you couldn't even have.
Well, it's just for the structure they live in, you have.
They can still roam, they can still roam around.
They have two hundred chickens, they're not living in a small group, they can roam around wherever they want.
They have to be, they have to be contained on the property.
Right, well, they could, you could have a fence, and.
They can't go on the neighbor's property.
You could have a chain link fence, and they could roam around up to your property line, irrationally.
Yeah.
I, I'm just bringing it up, maybe for, to hear comments from the, the rest of the commissioners.
Well, comments from the rest of the commission.
Did the subcommittee look at other communities and see if, um, the number of fowl?
We looked at a few others, and there was, I, I, I don't recall any of the limit.
Okay, it was just based upon similarly.
Similar, most of them, most of them were, correct me if I'm wrong, most of them were setback related, right?
They were, but there were some that did have some limits, nothing of any great thing that stood out.
Was it like a thousand?
No.
They didn't put like.
They put a number on it, I didn't see a number on it.
I, I worked right in Huntington Center, all right, I don't know if any of you know where like the Huntington Street Cafe was, that used to be a chicken farm, right across from the, the firehouse in Monroe. The guy had twelve hundred chickens on like a one acre lot in two big chicken coops. You know, they weren't out roaming around, they were in coops all the time, but, you know, it, it can happen, and it's not, his operation was, was clean, and, you know, I mean, it was right in the middle of Huntington Center.
Well, you have to wonder why they have a hundred chickens, because this doesn't allow you to operate a commercial entity?
Well, it can get away from, you know, one chicken can collect thirty eggs, and then, before you know it, you have thirty more chickens. You have to have a rooster.
Well, right, we're in the hundred foot setback.
Rooster's going to be.
Well, my point is.
Does it deliver chicken babies, or is it just?
Well, then you start having, you know.
I, I, I honestly doubt that.
I don't think your average person's having a hundred chickens in their house, in their house.
I don't think that this is going to be an issue, I really don't think it's going to be.
Yeah, and the reason why I say that is because, this is beside the acreage thing, we've never had, people have a hundred chickens on their property in town, or that I know of. Or anybody that has a chicken farm, right now, that I know of.
And if they do, it's not bothering anyone.
Basically, because I've, I've never seen them.
Well, Will found an illegal one.
I, I think.
The other thing is, is that, you know, you have a regulation and.
I think if, if, if we draft a reasonable regulation, it's going to bring the majority of the current chicken owners in town into compliance.
That's what.
Because most of them are not compliant.
Right, there are a lot of chicken people out there that.
All right, I, I agree with you, I, can I ask a horse question?
No, we're not talking about.
But it's in the first, but it's in the first section.
Yeah, but we weren't on that section, see, we're doing.
All right, well, I want to get to that section.
We're not proposing any changes.
Okay, but I want to get to that section before.
No, there's, we're not, we're not changing anything in that, in this amendment.
But you wanted to do the horses, you should.
That would be a separate amendment.
The subcommittee.
Separate amendment.
I'll talk to the subcommittee myself.
Okay. Let's, let's try to stay on track here, okay?
Well, uh, the other thing I want to ask, do we want to consider, uh, or discuss raising the number to maybe doubling the twelve in consideration of how many chickens may or may not get delivered when ordered in bulk?
Um, well.
See.
But isn't that commercial, if you're ordering that?
But you're seeing.
You can order less than two twenty-five chickens.
From a local place, but delivery wise, can you?
You can go to Eggway and buy two.
Okay.
This is not a public forum, I'm sorry.
I mean, I know, I know that ducks come in larger.
Why would we even, I'm saying, we're, we're talking about twelve or under, or twelve or more.
Yeah.
So if you get twenty-five of them, you'd have to meet the twelve or more.
Okay, so you would still, all right, so it would just be the hundred foot instead of the.
Yeah, we're not, we're not. That came up, because we're not saying that you can only have twenty-four, we're saying twelve or more, that covers the twenty-five.
You can order.
We're both talking at the exact same time, but I get it.
We didn't put a number, it's, it's, the, the setback.
In other words, if it's less than twelve, there's no restriction, that's what you're saying, that's what it says.
No, it's a, it's a fifty foot setback.
The setbacks are different at less than twelve.
If they're over twelve.
Twelve or fewer, I'm sorry.
Twelve or fewer.
It's a hundred foot setback.
If it's, if it's between twelve, zero to twelve, right, more than twelve, that's a hundred.
You should also remember the way this is written, although chickens is what the world seems to care about, it's, yeah, all fat.
Fowl. Yeah. You can have peacocks, peacocks are way noisier than roosters.
Well, then you get bigger birds, too, so if you're going to have bigger birds, and you start having a lot of those birds on these smaller properties, that would be a much bigger problem than, than twenty-four chickens.
Maybe we need to go by the pound instead of.
Yeah, like every.
I mean, turkey's all three times the size. If we wanted, we could, we could list seventeen different types of fowl and have different, you know, like our parking standards, I don't want to get there.
No, I agree with you, that's, my point was that the twelve was also, if I recall, during the regulations, that committee was sort of the, the bridge from going from two acres to no acreage, and I'm just pointing out, it also helps with the fact that if someone does larger birds, you're not impacting the neighbors with those larger birds.
So the, the current proposal is twelve or fewer, you only have to have a fifty foot setback. More than twelve, you need a hundred foot setback.
With a rooster, or, sorry, a male.
If you have one rooster and one chicken, it's a hundred foot setback.
And that's, that's, it's male, right, or the other bird as well? Uh, do we know that all, all fowl have noisy males and quiet females, is that a?
No, no.
I don't know, I don't know about ostriches.
I think all turkeys are equally noisy.
Okay, so that's, all right.
Getting hens are very loud.
Getting fat. Okay.
Let's, um, I, I just want to throw this out there because of some input that we had. Does anyone, how does anyone feel about having a reduction to the fifty foot setback?
Well, yeah, so that would be a, so if it's less than twelve instead of fifty?
Well, any, any kind, let's not, let's not talk about the quantity, let's talk about a, a lower setback.
And that's just for the structure that they're in, it's not for if the structure's fenced, and then they decide to walk around during the day, and they go back. Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
Fifty feet is that much?
I think fifty feet's fine.
Yeah, I, I am not in favor of reducing that setback below fifty feet, no. Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then we have another, uh, line that we added here, horses, livestock, and/or fowl, manure piles, and/or associated containers shall be located not less than fifty feet from any property line.
Can I ask a question on something else here, like C?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'm allowed there, good.
You know what you think of this? Farm.
Well, this is not a farm.
Regulation.
My barn can be thirty feet off the property line.
Your barn can be, but your manure pile can't.
Why not?
Because we said fifty feet.
I got it, I'm just saying to you. I'm a registered farm in state Connecticut.
Right.
So this is not for you then, this is for accessory uses.
Do we ever have a setback on manure piles for a farm?
No, we're adding that in.
And I, I don't agree.
This is for access.
I understand that, but I'm saying to you.
Well, no, this is setback.
No, it's not, this is setback, and I, we didn't have, we've never required that for a farm, and I'm not going to vote on that right now, I won't do that.
Setback for accessory use.
Hasn't, never been in there.
No, setback's pure.
A farm's a whole different category.
But you think, you think people should be able to put a manure pile on their property?
Not necessarily, but I'm saying to you, we never had a setback for a farm, for any kind of, because people sometimes spread their manure.
That's different.
No, it's not different.
It's a pile.
It's, that's different, spreading your manure on a field is not.
Not that I haven't, I'm just saying to you, is you're, you're, you're cutting into the regulations, farming regulations that we shouldn't cut into. That's what I'm saying, if you're a registered farm with the state of Connecticut, I don't think you should.
You're not exempt from it, though.
Do we ever have this before, we didn't have this before, right?
No, it's new.
Right.
You are subject to setbacks.
No, 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 I wasn't there for that part.
Yes, you were, no, I wasn't, you most certainly were.
I was talking about, we were talking about chickens, setback for their thing, not for the manure pile.
And the coops and the manure piles.
For the chickens.
Well, how's the different chicken manures, what's the difference?
You know, the thing is, like I'm saying to you, is that.
I mean, the chicken has less.
I don't have any issue with it, but I'm saying this, is that, it's, you know, I got, I got your point, but I'm saying, I don't want to put something on, on a farm, that if they've already, so what if they're pre-existing, their piles?
They're pre-existing like everything else.
Yeah, but you wouldn't know that.
Well, they can show that.
Yeah.
I think it goes back to nineteen thirty-nine.
I understand that, I'm just saying, in the farm, it's, it's different, it's not like, I don't know.
You don't want any setback at all?
No, I, I'm just saying, we never had a requirement for a farm.
I know what you, I know.
I never had setback requirements for chickens either, but that's what we're doing now. So.
I'm out on that part, so.
You are, but a, a container or, or some structure that deals with the manure does have a setback, credit only. Subject to the zoning setbacks of the district, so right now, it's a minimum of twenty-five or thirty, depending on district.
But if I have manure in my barn, and I'm going to move it out to a pile.
Well, your barn has to be, you know, meet the setback, too.
It does meet the setback, but I'm saying, now you're putting fifty foot, my barn's not fifty foot off the block.
We're not saying your barn has to be fifty feet.
We're just saying my manure, so if I put it in a can outside, I'm in violation.
Not if it's fifty feet.
My barn is not fifty feet, you understand, I just told you that, okay, so, it's like, you know, you're putting a regulation on me that it's fifty feet.
How many feet are you, we'll, we'll make sure.
Believe me, my manure is way far away from my barn, but I'm just giving you an example, just to tell you, I mean, you have other people that are farmers, that, that they're not going to meet this setback.
Would, would, would it be?
I'm just telling you.
What would an appropriate setback be, or not, as it is now?
The, the, the chicken thing, I understand could turn into a problem, that's why we're trying to do it for, for people that are in residential neighborhoods. When somebody that has a farm.
The resident has a farming.
Well, anybody that's farming, but I understand that, but I'm saying, most farmers take care of manure and everything like that, but if you put a regulation on them, you can have the zoning enforcement over there, saying, oh, you can't keep. Well, anybody that's farming, but I understand that, but I'm saying most farmers take care of manure and everything like that, but if you put a regulation on them, you can have the zoning enforcer over there telling, oh, you can't keep it there no more, I don't want to get into that, I'm not getting into that. Because then we're gonna have to change the regulation back. So.
You think like twenty-five feet is unrealistic?
What, for horses?
For manure.
For manure.
No, listen, we were taking care of the manure, so. The manure, from what I understand, we're just doing it for chickens.
That's not what it says.
No, it's, it's. No, I know that, that true that in at the end, Paul, I didn't know anything about this.
That was a late slide, I paid attention?
That's what happened, be the meeting I missed. But I'm just saying, so.
During your bathroom break?
No, I wasn't there.
Smoking break.
I want to hear from the, from the quiet corner over there, Ken, you ever said anything tonight to me?
I mean, I don't have any chickens living near me or anything like that, so I wouldn't, I can't even comment.
We're talking about manure now.
Manure, boy, if I gotta wake up and smell that all day, I'm gonna have a problem, but, you know. I don't know, whatever, whatever's been going on here is in the past ten years or so, I mean, I could get the chickens, you know, keep them around, keep them fifty foot, a hundred foot, whatever, but you know, other than that, I, I just don't have a problem with it for some reason, I don't know why. Throw them all, bring in a hundred of them, tho- those chickens there, I, you don't even hear those things. So I don't.
But, but our regulations don't pertain to just one particular type of chicken, it could be turkeys, it could be emus, it could be ostriches.
Be anything like that.
So.
Could be geese.
Guinea hens.
Yeah, I'm not gonna have a problem in my neighborhood with that, but if I did, I probably would want a bigger setback, but.
So.
I don't, I, I have no experience with it, or living around them, or even knowing anything about it, Bill, so I wouldn't. I, I don't have issues with it right now, so.
Ryan?
I understand the thought process of not wanting to have a pile of manure right next to your neighbor. Um, I would think, I assume people that have farms and pile the manure don't do it right on the neighbor's, on the property line with the neighbor.
We get a lot of land.
But I could see how also maybe a non-responsible person takes over a farm and decides, yeah, I don't want this near my house at all, I'm gonna pile it up right at the border, and then you get a problem. Uh, so I could see why you'd want a setback.
No, and, and I meant the setback, but I'm like saying that we didn't have, what kind of setbacks did we have before, well, on, on?
Well, it would be whatever the standard setbacks are for the zones, depends what zone you're in.
So it's thirty feet, I think.
If it are three, it's thirty.
It was thirty or.
Twenty-five is the other two.
Or twenty-five, so that's what we left it at, we, we've, we've discussed this before, going back way back when. And so we just left that at that.
Is a setback from what piles are ready on the.
No, it was for.
I was on the assumption that we're just really addressing chickens because.
Just put on the ground.
Most farmers wouldn't have that issue anyway.
Why?
You understand what I'm saying?
I know nothing about farmers.
Because most farm, no, most farmers remove their manure, or vice versa, they give it to another farm, they spread it, or they can make peat out of it, or, you know, there's, there's a bunch of things you could do with manure, it's like everybody thinks manure is bad.
Yeah, no, you're.
You get what I mean? Huh?
Oh, the can of your pile.
It could be a pile, could be.
A pile and.
Yeah, people usually put their garden, stuff like that, and I have a guy that, where, where my manure is and, and we mix it and everything, it turns into black dirt.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, you know, it's not like.
Oh, manure's fine, but it's the storage of it.
I'm saying, I, I got all that, but I'm saying, we never had an issue with the twenty-five or the thirty-foot setback. And then there's other farms, and I know there's farms in this town that will not meet this requirement you have right now. I already know that for a fact.
Well, I would love to have some help.
No, because we. You don't have a fifty-foot setback for your pile, and there's no way that she does, and I already know that, and there's other people that I know in this town the same way, they have a farm that's done.
Well, if they're existing, they're fine.
Huh?
If they're existing, they're fine.
They are, but if they sell their property to somebody, they're not.
It's still fine, it doesn't go, it goes with the property, it doesn't go with the.
Excuse me, I, I'm, I'm not a farmer, but what's the big deal moving a pile of manure?
No, somebody, some people cannot meet that setback on their farm. You understand, because of the structure or whatever.
Well, having a.
Because you have the property fenced, and you have certain.
It can't be fifty feet away?
Some people, they can't meet that, there's no, there's like, if, if you, if you have two acres and you have a farm and you have a field, and you have your horses out in the field, and you have a place where somebody picks it up, it may be closer than a fifty foot, or they'd have to drive all the way in the back.
If you have two acres of land, you should be able to be fifty feet away from the property line.
Some, some people, I'm just telling you, there's some older farm, there's old farms out there, there's old farms that, that's been farms for years that don't meet that, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that this just doesn't meet that.
Pre-existing, not a former.
I got all that.
But the other thing is, if they can't meet the fifty feet for that, how are they gonna meet it for the coop?
I just, well, I'm saying, I wasn't using any of that for the coop, I'm saying that somebody that's already has an established farm, you are now putting a regulation on that, that somebody can misinterpret that, they move the pile. You understand what I'm saying to you, so you're adding that to something that you could say that, oh, you moved the pile. You understand what I'm saying, so you could do that, and you can have the zoning enforcer go out and say, oh, no, that wasn't there before, or it wasn't like this before. I didn't want to get into that, that's something that I don't. Structures and all that kind of stuff, and now you start adding that on, you know, we, I was addressing the chickens. Because if somebody was in a residential neighborhood and they want to have chickens, it could turn into a problem. Because everybody's not a farmer, and not everybody's a great chicken owner, and so I, I have all that, that's why we've been vetting this up, so.
So what do we do with one acre near the, all houses? No farms?
It's fine, but you, you're putting.
No, I'm just asking, I'm not telling.
Unless.
He wants to say, he said, what do we do?
Okay, well, then why don't we just put in here?
He wants to make this only relate to chickens.
Chickens.
Expose the farmer's chicken farm.
How about that?
You want to take the horses and livestock out of it.
Get rid of the horses and the livestock and leave it as the way it is. Why would we add that in there? In order to have horses and livestock anyway.
We do, we do, because I doubt many residents want to see manure piles.
Yeah, we do address manure piles and.
Well, we say the same thing, we say the same thing for the chickens up top, top there. We added the setback because that was the thing you as a committee added.
Yeah.
And we did discuss that when we.
Yeah, he doesn't remember that.
I think it's important, yeah.
I think it's more important for the, for the fowl than it is for the horses and livestock. Because horses and, and livestock are going to be on larger parcels to begin with. I think what we have to be more concerned about is like you were saying, you go into the residential neighborhood where there's nothing but one acre lots of houses.
This.
I think that's.
Four.
Yeah, they're not likely to have a horse.
This has to be a.
Right.
They could, but they're not likely.
Well, no, they need two acres to have a horse.
Oh, yeah, right.
So. What do you think if we, if we modify E to basically just relate to fowl?
So that's not gonna prevent somebody with two acres of land to put their manure pile.
Well.
No, 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 you.
They have to be located and maintained so as to prevent runoff onto adjacent properties.
Well, they could be on the uphill side or downhill side.
Could be on a downhill side.
And be, you know.
You know, like, like. Paul, this is.
That's my, that's my opinion. I also have an opinion about the number of them.
No, I know, but this is, this has been, this has been in effect for a long time, we didn't change any of this, this has never got changed, none of this. But we've never had a problem in town with any of this. The only thing that we started to change was because of the chickens. And we didn't, right?
Nobody enforced it.
Huh?
Yeah, not a problem because no one's enforced it, that's one of the reasons.
I got, but I'm saying to you is that.
What is this doing?
That's, none of this has ever changed, so what do you want to do? Who are you at with this?
Well, like I said, take the horses and livestock out of it.
Yeah, I would. I, I can.
I personally don't agree, I think it should be kept with it. But, you know, that's a committee, take a vote.
What do you guys think?
Propose section E. No, no, what do you think?
I think it should, I think there should be some sort of, I think there should be some sort of property line.
Well, no, the, the.
There's setbacks, sorry.
The, the question right now is should horses and livestock be in.
I understand, but you asked what I thought.
Or should just fowl be in the setback? The fifty-foot setback?
The manure.
The manure pile.
Yes, I, I, I got you.
Okay.
I'm of the assumption, because not being a farmer, that manure is manure. And I think it should, I think it's hard to separate the two, so I, I don't, I, I don't know if fifty feet is, is too much, but, I mean, what, what do we have now, it's twenty-five or thirty, or it depends on.
Right now, it's, it's not really spelled out.
Okay, so if we have to get it spelled out.
Where, where this becomes relevant in my mind is that currently chickens are only allowed on two acre parcels. We're, we're now proposing to take away all of the acreage requirement for chickens.
I got that.
And just, just have it regulated by setback.
I got that.
So.
I got that part.
So should the manure piles be kept fifty feet off the property line?
But why does it have to be fifty, it could be a different number.
Yeah, you're right.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, what do you recommend, Mr. Rain?
I recommend twenty-five personally myself, but twenty-five feet. Thirty.
That's like from here to the door over there, from where I am.
Chickens are little.
Yeah, but a lot of them, a lot of little poops. Really quick. All right, Jonathan, what do you think?
But you're on big, but the bigger, the bigger amounts of chickens have bigger setbacks and stuff like that too, though.
No.
And then they're gonna move their piles.
That's the, for the, that's for the coop.
I, I think we can get away with, with thirty feet, we could have to be fifty if that's an issue. That's just me.
I'm fine with the, uh, E as it was drafted.
Leaving the horses and livestock and everything at fifty feet. Ken?
Yeah, same way.
Ja, or Ryan?
I'd, uh, I'd go with Bruno with lowering it maybe to thirty.
And getting rid of horses and livestock?
Um, no, I would, I again.
Keep, keep that.
Yeah, no, because I think the agreement that, uh, you know, a pile of manure, you're not gonna be separating it by whose manure it is. It's a pile, if, if you happen to have horses and chicken.
It drives them down.
You're gonna throw it all together.
And so we have a reduction, fifty feet, fifty feet, a reduction.
I want it to be kept the same way and just add the fifty feet for the chickens.
Just for the chickens.
I say you leave it the way it is. I don't care about it the way it is.
I'm inclined to leave it the way it is also, so that's kind of like the majority, so for the time being, and this is, again, this is just a proposal. But for the time being, I think we'll leave it as drafted.
And this will eventually go to public hearing, and then we can hear more input on people.
Yeah, we get to do this all over again.
More experience with manure.
Anything else, any, Paul, you want to discuss any more about?
I didn't really hear anybody's opinion about any quantities.
One, there's, oh, oh, quantity of manure?
Upper, upper limit.
Not of a nor.
On the chicken.
Oh, I, I one hundred percent don't think that there should be a limit on chickens, I, I think the, the language here with how it talks about adverse reactions on the environment is gonna keep that regulated without putting a number.
I agree. Leave it the same way it is.
I like it as drafted.
Wait, 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 John doesn't get to talk?
Not again.
Thank you, John.
I, I wish there was like some intermediate step between them, uh, so like, you know, we, we have the lower limit of the twelve, and then something in the middle, and then something higher than.
Well, that could be a proposal, right?
Right, that, that would only be my preference, but I haven't heard anything like on how much space takes out, how many chickens you can fit in there and stuff like that, about putting a intermediate step on the number, but then having no limit on the upper end, depending on the size of the setback that you can have. But that then sounds like an acreage thing, but if we're wanting to keep at the setback then I would just like an intermediate step.
What do you mean intermediate?
I, on the number.
Between twelve and.
Between twelve and whatever number it is that's appropriate.
He wants like three steps, like zero to twelve.
We have, we have twelve.
Twelve to a hundred and a hundred up.
Right, so, right, so some type of intermediate step between the two.
So if there's.
Say if there's. Between twelve and then another number, and then that high number.
Then it would be a weighted setback, you're saying?
Right, yeah.
You guys are talking about the width of this room.
A hundred foot.
The difference between twenty-five and fifty and a hundred, you mean twenty-five and a hundred's a difference? Between fifty and a hundred is, I'm not pretty sure.
It's twice as much.
It's twice as much, yes, I mean, if they have.
Oh, fifty and a hundred is pretty different.
My point is adding intermediate of seventy-five feet for, you know, fifteen chickens, I mean, what, what's the?
No, that doesn't.
Well, it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to be seventy-five feet, but it just has to be some type of.
You have some kind of number you want?
No, I, I want.
Well, you, Paul, you haven't come up with a number, right?
No, I, I was just.
The number would be based on the size of the coop.
I, I just have an issue with it being unlimited, and I.
No, I got that, I'm saying you have a number that where you would like to shut it off.
No, no. I don't know what's, what's a reasonable number, you know?
Is a thousand reasonable?
I mean, maybe it's based on, is there a limit as to the size of a structure?
Sky.
You know?
Are you an architect or a lawyer?
I'm actually in training.
Don't answer the question.
Do you have a number, John?
If no one has any other issue with that, then that's okay. If your property's big enough, you can have as many as you want.
No, I, no, I got that, that's.
But I, so I don't think there should be one of that.
I think if if you're a registered farm anyway, I don't think that this would apply to your use, would it?
Yes.
The setback would.
Registered farms are not exempt, still have to comply with the zoning, right?
Farms are not exempt from zoning.
No, but I'm saying if you put on a number of chickens,
you'd have to change it by acreage.
You could put that up in accessory uses section.
Yes, I, I don't think we, I don't think we need an upper limit.
Can you do it except for farms, or is that not realistic?
I think it's kind of tough because.
I mean, not that I would ever have a chicken farm, but I mean, I could have a big chicken farm. Seriously, go for it.
You see, the setback is related to the impact. So when you start giving preference to users, you've gotten away from the nexus between the standard and the purpose of the standard. So if you're trying to protect neighbors from manure, it doesn't matter whether. No, I just give a reason for why you can't start accepting.
Well, I thought that would be acceptable because there, there's other limitations if you're a farm. There are these other, you know, requirements.
There's a farm.
Like, like for example, it has to be, does it have to be two acres?
No.
No, there's no, anybody could have a farm.
Well.
That's not true, well, you have to meet a certain standard to be a farm.
There's a farm and there's a farm.
But under the state, under, under the state, you have to meet a certain standard in order to be a farm, a registered farm in state. And that's.
Yeah, it's unlikely he's gonna be on an acre, right? It's unlikely to be on an acre.
It's unlikely to be on an acre because you, you have to sell product and you have to do this and you have to.
That's my point, that's what I'm saying, so.
And so it, it's, it's a whole different.
So if it's a farm, then it's not limited, but if it's, you know, if it's a name.
What I'm saying here is, you know, we address this to address the chicken concerns that we had in town.
That's what we're talking about, chickens.
And so I think our, our focus should be on the chickens and, and you should be on the chickens and deal with the chicken deal and.
Why is there limitations on, why is there limitations on other livestock?
Why?
Yeah. Why can I only have four, uh, uh?
Well, no, because you get.
Four goats I could have, but I could only, but I could have two hundred chickens.
It, it, if it's on two acres, it could get, it's like everything else, if you don't have a good person that takes care of their animals, that's, that's why we look at this very well because you gotta really, you know, everybody's got a good chicken owner.
What's, what's the purpose of limiting somebody to have four goats?
So they don't have them all stacked next to each other on their property?
Certain amount of property that they could take.
What's wrong with five?
But the thing is, is that to tell you the truth, we didn't have a problem with any of these other regulations. Nobody was complaining about. No, 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 this, no, 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 wait a minute, you see the blue part? This is what we changed, I'm just trying to lay it out there, this was there, right? This has never changed, none of this has ever changed, this has always been in our regulations.
Right, but somebody came up with that, somebody came up with that number.
This was when we went through, I think the.
It was even before two thousand thirteen.
It was, because it was like, we had people that were in here that, we had people in here about the roosters because they were trying to ban roosters.
They were gonna ban roosters.
Yeah, we were banning roosters and it got into, we had a lot of people here, but that's why it just came up the way it was. That's why it's changed.
Anyway, anyway, please, let's try to bring this back.
Right.
Upper limit, do you think there should be an upper limit number on chickens?
I'm at a no.
You're at a no.
Me, um, I, I think, no, but I feel right now, I don't think there's a need to put it in there because I don't think we have a problem with it.
Okay.
And if we had a problem with it.
Paul thinks there is, Michael?
Well, I don't know, I think if you, once you get up to like seventy, sixty, seventy chickens, it's, is it still a backyard?
If they're in the backyard, sure.
Does that matter though?
I don't think it matters and I don't think that's something that, you know, we're really gonna have an issue with. People want chickens, they're gonna have ten chickens, they're gonna have twenty chickens, um, you know, and my son had twenty, my son had twenty-seven chickens, all right, and it was, it was no big deal.
I don't think that.
He has five acres, but, you know.
That's why it was no big deal.
I don't think anybody's gonna have a problem if you put like a fifty chicken limit on somebody that they got a one acre zone, I don't think it's, it's gonna, I don't think people could address fifty chickens or a hundred chickens, I, you know, I don't think we're gonna have a problem with that. Even if you did put a limit on, I don't think, that's not what we changed this for, we changed this for so people could have chickens for, not to be chicken farmers, we didn't do it to be chicken farmers, we did it for, so people can have chickens and have their own eggs or whatever, that's what we changed this for.
I understand.
Right, so even if you do put a limit on, I don't think you're gonna have a problem because I don't think anybody's gonna have more than twelve chickens unless you're gonna be maybe like the lady that sells chickens or something like that, she may have a ton of.
Twenty-four, got twenty-seven, and you know, twenty-seven is not an unreasonable number for him to have.
No, it's not, I mean, at one time I had.
Yeah, but he only had like two acres of, of.
Dedicated for chickens.
Open land, no, I mean, no.
Paul, do any of your neighbors have chickens?
At one time, you tell you, I have a chicken coop.
Well, they did before the Bobcat came around.
Well, that's, I, I have two neighbors that one, one has chickens nicely kept in a. The other one, they free ran, they let them grow.
It doesn't turn into an issue.
Yeah, it doesn't, they do not survive in this town.
All right, so I, I think from what I've heard, other than, than Paul and Leon saying maybe, that there's really no issue in an upper limit.
Correct.
Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
Okay, then we're not gonna at this point look into regulating the upper limit. I think it, I think that even though it, it could be interpreted to be vague, we do say that they have to be in a manner so as not to create public health hazard or adverse conditions.
It gets thinned down anyways.
So we'll leave that, we're not going to look at reducing the setback to fifty feet and we're going to leave subsection E as it is for the time being despite Commissioner Ambrosi's vehement opposition.
I'm opposed to it too, but he's vehement.
Okay. Commissioner Ambrosi and Mayenees. All right, anything else that we want to talk about on that? So this would be November fourteenth for a public hearing? Will, when would that go for public hearing?
Um, I have to sort of relate this to the regional headings, these are neighboring towns, so it probably would be not.
They need thirty days, right?
Yeah, I might have to get it out and all that.
Probably be our first December meeting?
Yeah, probably.
After Thanksgiving, but.
Yeah, don't tell those turkeys.
Uh, no.
Yeah, we, we already had public participation, it would be.
Uh, by everybody around coming out with being worried.
It, it, there will be plenty of opportunity for the public to speak at the public hearing. Okay, public hearing would be the time for, for that to be presented.
Do you guys ever seek outside, like expert opinions on anything, or is it just, just out of curiosity?
It could be sent to us for the public hearing.
We've done, we've done a lot of research, we've been given a lot of information at subcommittee level, so.
If you're out for free, I'm an expert on chickens, just say.
Could she send a letter to, for the public hearing, that's what it would have to do? She could write, she could draft a letter.
She can come to the public hearing and address the, the issues at the public hearing, this is not a done deal.
Yeah.
After the public hearing.
After public hearing, we're gonna listen to the public anyway, so.
This is subject to change at the public hearing.
So if, did you go to Massacre when they had the big public hearing there a while back?
That wasn't a public hearing, that was a public information meeting.
Correct, sorry, um, but that was the first meeting public spoke, then we came to our meeting, there was no more public there for people to talk, then the things were drafted, so you have that. Nothing set in stone right now, we're gonna move forward with this, put it out there and then you fill a room with people to talk to us and tell us more, okay?
We're having a, we're having a brief training session.
Training?
Yeah.
How long's the training session? Two, five?
Two hours, no more than two hours, right?
How long's it gonna be?
By the time you have to get home.
No, no, I'm just asking you a question, how long's it gonna be, because he won't let me take a break, so.
He, he's gotta go have a cigarette.
No, I just asked a simple question, how long's it gonna be?
Well, he can go downstairs, we don't have to take a break.
All right.
You wanna take a break?
No, no, it's fine, no.
All right, that's, that's the end of, um, Will, hold on, that's the end of item, uh, number ten. Item eleven corresponds with other receipt, uh, nothing, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. Okay, eight twenty-four, we're back. All right, item number. Item number twelve, since tonight was gonna be a short meeting.
Was going to be. Was going to be.
It was gonna be, so somebody had to delay it.
No, wait a minute, that's not part of the, Paul over there for.
Will's gonna, gonna run through a, a little bit of a work session on the commission procedures. This is for the benefit of some of the newer members on the commission, um, it's just a, a refresher for everybody.
Okay, so you may all have received this in, when you first came on the commission, you might have got a copy of this, I updated it a little bit. It's like, did this back, I think, four years ago, but anyway, so, and we can, if you have questions along the way, I suggest we talk about them along the way. But as you may know, the authority of the planning and zoning commission comes from, from a certain areas, it starts with the general state statutes and the town charter. You have bylaws that how you run your meetings and how you operate and you adopt two legislation pieces, which is the zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations, which spell out the different permits and procedures that you follow for those various things and those are things you're quite more aware of. Your zoning regulations, your subdivision regulations really can't contain anything in that isn't allowed under the state statutes, so the state statutes tell you what you can do, which doesn't tell you what you can't do, but by what, by what it doesn't say is what you can't do. And obviously they need to be consistent with your plan of conservation and development. You all know you're a subset of the state, again, that's what I'm talking about, how the state promulgates through the statutes which you then operate under. You can only, as I said, work within that, within that confines. So to review the application process, there is usually a pre-application, and pre-application can be a mix of either with staff before it ever comes to you or with you, like general appointments, or if someone wanted to actually come and do a pre-app before they even proposed the full thing, that they could come, get some general discussion. They submit the application and the official receipt of the clock begins, it doesn't begin with the day they bring it into the office. It's either the next regular scheduled meeting or thirty days, whichever is sooner. So if someone comes in today or tomorrow with an application, it isn't today, it's twenty-four hours before, so it hadn't been yesterday, it would have been, the official receipt would have been today. So anything that came in today, it's gonna be your next regular scheduled meeting, that, that is official clock starts. It doesn't mean we don't work on the application or process it, it just means from a statutory point of view of all the timelines that you have to do certain things by, that's the date that everything starts. Then you have meetings, whether it be a public hearing or a regular meeting for like site plans. You gotta deal with quorum and exercise of duty, so you've gotta operate within a quorum, certain amount of people have to be here in order to have a meeting and to operate your business. We'll get into a little bit detail of each of these things as I go through the slides. Seating and participation, you understand that concept, I believe. Site visits, this isn't something we do as a group in Monroe, there are the towns that do. There are some meeting law requirements when you do have meetings, there are site visits, because they are deemed meetings when you do that in a quorum. Typically here, people are going on their own for the most part, or you know the properties or whatever, but site visits are important. You'd be surprised how much you learn from a site visit versus what you see on paper. You can see something on paper and think one thing, you get to the sites totally different, so site visits are important. Expar communications, we'll get into that a little bit later. Public hearings, you're well versed in, in what's a public hearing. Deliberation decisions follows the public hearing, uh, and then motions and voting. And then after that, it's out of your hands and the staff is, is reviewing for a review, we call review, review of approval. That's implementing whatever conditions that are on the approvals and getting the administrative permit, so again, we'll go into detail on some of these. So the pre-app, as I said, someone could come, pre-application, it's non-binding, meaning you can say pretty much what you want, um, they can say, it's not binding on either party, so that's an opportunity where if you don't, I mean, you still should be careful that you're not prejudging it to the extent that you're being biased of any way, but you can, if you don't think something works for the town or isn't consistent, you have more liberty to say things like that in a pre-app than you do at a public hearing.
That was our Commonwealth Farms one, right, was the recent one?
That was the recent one, Commonwealth Farms, so you can do more up and down kind of consensus to them than you would do in a public hearing, because a public hearing, you're supposed to gather information, then deliberate and make a decision based on the gathering of information, whereas in a pre-app, you can go direct and say, no, I don't really like that, or it doesn't seem to work, or or I don't see a bigger setback, or you know, things like that, um, or you need more buffering, you know, something more general that would give them direction. You also don't have to say anything at a pre-app. Which may not help them, but by you not saying anything, that can help them in another way, they may think, well, okay, we're not getting anywhere with this, so. Staff rarely meets with all kinds of people on all different things at different levels. Sometimes somebody walks in the door at an application, other times we may have talked to them for three months. All right, so we talked about the clock, on the official date, the timeframes, so you have different kinds of actions, you have site plans, you have special exception permits, subdivisions, and then you have zoning text amendments, like we were just discussing, and zone boundary changes. Out of all those ones that have public hearings, of the last three, the site plan does not require a public hearing. You can have a public hearing if you so desire or think it's important enough to have a public hearing on the particular site plan. But there is only a sixty-five day window from the official clock receipt to when you're supposed to make a determination. Not a lot of time, the applicant has sixty-five days to extend that, um, that period. On subdivision special access permits and the zoning text amendments, they all require the public hearings. You have a sixty-five day window to have, to actually have the public hearing. Once the public hearing is open, there's another thirty-five days to keep the public hearing open if you need to. And then once it's closed, there's sixty-five days to deliberate and make a determination. Again, the applicant has sixty-five days anywhere along that stream to extend any one of those periods. And you know, the purpose for these time limits are two, one is to keep things moving so that applicants aren't stuck in a, you know, perpetual forever, go back and do this, go back and do this, go back and do this. But the other is to also give you sufficient time, because you only meet twice a month, you know, to do things and to understand the project enough so that you can make a good informed decision. So meetings, um, so you have two kinds of meetings, you have a regular meeting, which is the ones we just scheduled for next year. And then you have special meetings, special meeting is something that gets called, the chairman can call a special meeting pursuant to the bylaws. The difference between regular scheduled meetings besides obviously the calendar, is that the agenda of a regular meeting can be amended at the meeting by a supermajority vote of the board, the commission. The agenda of a special meeting is set, that's it, you can't amend the agenda at the meeting. So whatever, you know, you call a special meeting a week before, two days before, you have an agenda, it's only for that, you can't go beyond that, that, that aspect. You have to have a quorum, a quorum is, I believe, four members. And that could include an alternate if they have three full members and one more, but you have to have four to have a meeting. So as far as quorums when you're outside of this room, obviously if you went on a, a site visit and you went as a body, you would have to notice that as a meeting. If you all show up at a baseball game at the high school, that's not a meeting. You know, you can all be in the same place at one time, you can all go to other, other meetings or other things that are not your business and all be there at the same time, because it's not meetings. You cannot conduct business at that meeting that's planning and zoning business though, so if you're sitting around at the baseball game afterwards, you should not be discussing an application as a group.
Uh, can you, can you, the same party, wouldn't it be a caucus if it's only?
You can have a caucus. And, and I think there's some, I'm not sure how much that really applies to the planning and zoning, because planning and zoning is really not supposed to do anything outside of a meeting.
Yeah.
We.
But a caucus purpose.
We had caucuses.
Yeah, no, but caucuses are not usually, but you don't have a caucus about a public hearing matter.
No, usually it's about.
Party line.
Party line, stuff within the, within the commission.
And that's not necessarily the business of the commission, so you could have that, but you, you shouldn't have a caucus to determine strategy for a public hearing.
Right.
And that, we talked about the adding agenda items. And the reason for that, I think, is obvious, you call a special meeting, it doesn't give a lot of people opportunity to know about the meeting because your meetings are public. So people should know about them and be able to come and talk about it, if you go adding things, have a special meeting that no one expected you to have, and then you add things to the agenda besides that, that's even less public notice. So we talked about the quorum, it's four members. All meetings are open to the public, obviously you can have an executive session. Executive session is limited for specific things, things like personnel issues, which isn't so much the duty of the planning and zoning commission, but that could come up. Litigation, um, you can go for, and I think this is one other thing, but it's not really related to planning and zoning. For the most har- time, when planning and zoning commission has an executive session, it's usually about litigation. So if someone calls for an executive session, you state what it relates to, the room gets cleared or you go to a different room. And you can invite people into the executive session for the purposes of, like you can invite me and the attorney or whatever, for the specific purposes of, of what we might bring for the purpose of that executive session. But then you come out, you don't make any decisions in the executive session, you just discuss issues. You might come up with a, a path of where you were gonna go, but when you come out of the executive session, if like for instance, you're talking about litigation and they're talking about whether to settle or not settle and what the terms of settlement, but when you come out of the executive session, that's when you would make a motion to settle pursuant to litigation, pursuant to, you'd make a decision outside of the executive session.
Didn't we just have one of those, not too long?
Not too long. All right, um, as you know, the full members are automatically seated, alternates are seated according to rotation. If it's your rotation and you're not. If it's your rotation and you're not at the meeting, we skip over you. We also, when you are seated within deliberations, we keep you seated. So if an alternate is seated at deliberations, and it carries to the next meeting, and you, we've done this as you're aware, and let's say the missing member is at the next meeting, they do not, even if it's a full member, they do not get into the deliberation. We stick with whoever started the deliberations to finish the deliberations. But other than that, during the process, until we get to deliberations, the alternates participate in a full capacity, as far as being able to ask questions and participate and give their points of view. We talked about the rotation and what goes off. We talked a little about site plan, so site plan, the difference basically between your site plan and special exception permit is, the site plan is really the layout of the development. And a special exception permit also has a site plan component, obviously. But the big difference is, a special exception permit, what that is, best way I can explain that is, in the, in the, each district, you have permitted uses. The first level of permitted uses are by site plan in the commercial districts. Then you have special exception uses. Those are uses that are deemed to be okay to be in that district, but because of their operational, their function, or something about them, there's some, there needs to be other standards that have to be adhered to, to make them compatible with the other uses that don't require the special exception permit. Okay? So that's why they're deemed special exception permit uses, that's why they have a little higher review. So you may think of like, an office building in industrial district, it's pretty benign. But you know, you get that positive thing, which is, you know, a big manufacturing plant has some airish, you know, air quality requirements and other requirements of noise and whatnot. Those have some functional things that aren't so compatible next to an office building, unless you mitigate those issues. And that's the pur- purpose of the special exception permit, to deal with those issues and bring out the specifics of those uses. Similar, in a residential zone, you know, the primary uses are single-family homes. A special exception permit is a church. I mean, we all see churches in residential neighborhoods, but you know, they have parking lots, and they have lights, and you know, they operate different hours, and, and you know, so to be compatible with the residential neighborhood, maybe they have a bigger setback, or you know, a different standard for the, you know, the parking's further away. And they need a buffer or a landscape thing. So that's what the special exception deals with, those kinds of things. Subdivision, obviously, is the development of land into lots. It's governed under both the zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations. The subdivision regulations has the process, has the standards for the streets and public improvements. The zoning regulations dictates the acreage, the setbacks, and the other dimensional things that they have to comply with. And obviously zoning text amendments and boundary changes are, they're a different kind of permit. They're a legislative act, where you have a lot more discretion. The others are all administrative acts, where you basically file the regulations. The special exception permit has a little bit more discretion, because you have to make some findings related to compatibility. But the zoning text amendments and the boundary changes are purely legislative. If you don't feel that they're consistent with your P O C D and the plan for the town, you can just deny it outright. You don't need to have a big reasoning like you might for a site plan or a special exception permit. So you have a lot of latitude as what you include, what you don't include. Still has to be rational to some degree, but you have a lot of latitude.
Point this out too, I don't know, with the Courier being no more, I don't know if any of you have gotten the voices, or are going to be getting it. But that's the new regional, local little paper that is now going to cover Monroe. And what's interesting is, I was reading it at dinner tonight, and you know, it covers a wide range of towns, but like Newtown, and Brookfield, and I forget, there was one other town. You get to see what their zoning departments are doing. And you know, most of the stuff that comes before us, we approve. They're, you want to talk about people not being applicant-friendly? Some of these towns are, they're bad, they're just like, nope, nope. And I suggest you get the papers and read on some of the other towns and what they're doing. Because like Will said, you know, Newtown had some zoning changes that were presented before them, and they said, nope, doesn't comply with our P O C D, and they just threw it out. So we do have that authority, even though we don't exercise it as frequently as we maybe should.
Yeah, and in some respects, Connecticut makes you go through a process if someone applies. Because I'll give you a comparison, in New York State, on legislation, they can stop the review at any minute. They don't even need a reason. So if they don't like it for any minute, at anywhere along the process, they can just stop reviewing it. So I mean, other states are even tougher in some, because it's such an important thing, that it's legislation, it's up to you as a body to do it. So if you think it's not consistent, you should have that authority.
But we can't deny a product just because they don't like it.
No, I'm talking about text amendments and zone boundary changes. I'm not talking about site plans.
Yeah, we're not, not, not a special exception permit or site plan. I'm talking about zoning regulations and boundary changes. Those we have a lot of latitude over.
We talked about site visits, obviously. Expar, take, communications. The bottom line in the statute, to protect your decisions, is everything that gets done with the commission is supposed to be done during the meeting. So you really shouldn't be talking to each other, you shouldn't be talking to other people about active applications. It can be used against you if other, you know, if it's controversial, and there's litigation, and they find out about it. You know, there's stories, like you know, today, we all carry these things, right? So you know, occasionally probably people use them up on the dais and stuff. You know, this is another form of communication. I went to a conference last week, and the lawyer was talking about one of these things about exparte. He said, well, this guy, one of the members recused himself. So he got up and he went and sat right there. And during the hearing, people noticed that he was texting on his phone. And so after the meeting, the staff said something to the attorney, the town attorney, said, you know what he was doing, right? He goes, no. He was texting the members on the board. They were texting back and forth. I mean, I don't think any of you do that, but that's, this type of stuff opens the door for you having more problems. So you know, be careful what we do, what we don't do. But you know, as I say, just don't engage outside the meeting, because it just causes potential problems if there's litigation. You know, I mean, obviously there's a level of that that goes on in every community. We all know each other, we all live and see each other. You know, that general stuff's all right, but it's just, you have to be careful. And it's tough for you guys, because I'm sure you go to the grocery stores and people come up to you, sort of talking about different things, and you know. And it's hard, but you really, especially if, especially if we're in a hearing, especially if the public hearing is open. You have to be careful, because those, those could be things that could be brought up under, you know, showing bias. That's why with the emails, you know, you can all email me, and I can email all you collectively, but you all should not be on strings of emails back and forth with each other. Because that's communications.
Or we should not be getting emails from residents about issues. As commissioners, that's something you have to be very careful. Anything that people are talking to you about that's zoning-related, you really can't discuss with them. Because if something comes up in the future, you would have to recuse yourself, or if not, any decision that the commission made, if that person said, well, I talked to him two months ago about this, and he said this, this, this. You know, it's grounds for, for, you know, appeal or overthrow of our ruling. So you gotta be real careful talking to other people about zoning issues.
All right, so public hearings, we have them for the different permits. We're not as formal as a court, obviously, we don't take in evidence the same way as court does and stuff. We have some level of formality, but it's not, it's not a court. I mean, we're not a court. The point of the public hearing, obviously, is to get information, to ask questions about the project from both the applicant and get input from the public. And you have to give the public opportunity to talk. Some towns have time limits, like you get three minutes, but you can't not let them, you can, you can have time limits, but when everyone else is done, you've got to let them talk again. Yeah. Now obviously, there's a level of, if they start getting redundant, or out of line, you know, that's what the chair is to keep in check. You know, they don't need to repeat the same thing over and over again. I mean, that, you can ask them to not do that. But you have to give them opportunity to talk. They have an opportunity for their consultants, their lawyers, to come in and make presentations. There's actually a process for an environmental intervenor in some instances, which we've had. When we, I think, was it Walmart?
Walmart.
And there's a process for that. There is aspect of allowing cross-examination, and the statutes aren't very clear about how far that goes. Most towns do like we do, everything gets addressed to the board, and the chair kind of dictates who talks when. And that's sort of the cross-examination, you know. The opposing attorney might ask a question, and then we give the opportunity for the applicants to rebut. They can choose to do that, or do it in writing, or not at all. Not at all could be a problem for them too, because you know, that doesn't rebut the cross-evidence. And if you rely on this consultant, that's up to you to decide. But you have to give people their, their opportunity. Hearings, again, have a 35-day window. If we haven't gotten something from the well-in agency and there's a well-in permit, there's another 35 days that we have, and the applicant also has that 65 days to extend. But at some point, if we come to the end, the applicant isn't addressing your questions, or doesn't give you the information, you may have to close, and that decision might be a negative, because he didn't respond. But we don't usually have that problem with the timeframes that are allowed. So basically what it's saying is, you've got to let everybody present their case, because your decision should be on everything. And applicants have, have a responsibility to make their case, but the opposition also does, because if they are to litigate, it has to be based on what's in the record. You know, someone can't come make a claim that you did something wrong, and if they hadn't really kind of put that into the record. You know, that's kind of, they can sue, but they could lose on that, because they, the court will say they didn't make that known as part of the hearing process. Again, obviously, everything goes through the chair. Reading the rules is good, you do that before the hearing. Actually, when I was at this seminar, they asked all the different kinds of questions about the things that we did, and we do about 85% of the things that they, they were saying. Do you do this, do you do that? So I was, that was good, I was glad we did that. People give letters, you know, you're not obligated to read the letter. You're, you are obligated to take it, and you should be reading it yourself, but we don't have to read it out loud if they're not here, they can read it if they want. We get these green cards, those are telling us that they mailed the notice to the neighbors, and that's a thing that we check on. When we do get exhibits at a meeting, you should understand, depending on what it is, did we give enough time to consider that exhibit? You know, they give you a stack of papers like this, it's kind of hard to say we're going to close the hearing, if you haven't looked at that stuff. If they give you one piece of paper, you can read it and you can absorb it at the meeting, you know. But you also have to remember that the public hasn't seen it, so if someone wants a copy of it, we have to kind of make that available if they so ask for it. That's why we have the public notice, we tell them that the stuff's available in the office. We now post everything on the web too, so we're posting the applications on the web. So at the beginning of meetings, is, we didn't talk about this before, but if, for whatever matters on the agenda, if you have a conflict of interest, or some other reason why you can't objectively be for that item, you would recuse yourself. The practice here has been that when you recuse yourself, you leave the room. That's the best practice. Because, you know, I gave you a very extreme example with the phone. But the other is, there's been examples where people in the, sitting in the audience looking at you, that are your members, recused, and they have face contact. And we can talk by their face, so. And that's, again, that happens, and if someone notices it, that can be bad for the commission. Because the best thing is to leave the room, and that's what we do. And then you come back and you reseat after that. And you know, recusals for, you know, he's your best friend, you do social activities with the person, or you have a financial relationship, or someone in your family has a financial relationship, or you're the neighbor, you know, things like that. It's up to you as a member to determine whether you have a conflict. It's not for others to tell you that, you have to make that decision. Realize, if others think you have a conflict and you don't, you are putting the commission's decision at risk. But it is up to you as an individual to say you have the conflict and recuse yourself. So typically at the meetings, we, you know, we go through that process of reading the notice. The applicant gets up and does their presentation. And then we get the, we enter in the record all the things that we've received. And you go, you understand the public process, we live that, obviously. So part of the thing that you should understand is that when you're in the public hearing, or whenever you're asked in front of applicants, your role is to gain information. So you're supposed to try to phrase most things in the form of a question. And you're, although I think it's okay to have general commentary about something, and whether you think it's consistent or inconsistent with certain things, be careful that it isn't so biased, in the sense that you're not being objective. That you're showing that you're fine with it, or you're not fine with it. Either one of those is bad, because it's showing you're prejudiced, so you're not really, you know, if you sit there with the applicant, and you're all saying, yeah, it's great, but no, no, and the public gets on, this is the worst thing since sliced bread, you know, they're going to say, you're all prejudiced, because you're all saying this is a great thing. So you may feel that way, but you know, don't project it.
Yeah, that was something I wanted to comment on. Until we're in deliberation, don't voice an opinion on what you're seeing. Don't say, oh yeah, I really like that. That's not appropriate during the public hearing portion of it. It's definitely appropriate during deliberation. But like Will said, that's, that's more or less a predetermination, so try to avoid doing that.
Other basic things, obviously, you know, the, for the most part, we do have video nowadays. So, but we don't necessarily, you know, without the pointers and stuff, we don't know what we're talking about. So it's, it's good to be descriptive about certain things, so that gets better on the record that way. The other thing too, is that if someone comes with, you know, experts, it doesn't mean that they, they are totally the end-all. You know, because there is some level of expertise that you may have individually, or just collectively as being on a commission, that could counter the arguments of the actual expert who has the credential. You know, just because he has a credential doesn't mean it totally wins the day. Although, it doesn't hurt to have the opposing credential, if you don't believe, like if you have a traffic analysis and you all don't really believe it, or you question it. One, you have to question it, that's a start. The second is to have someone on your side, you know, look at it and give you objective information as to whether that's credible or not. So when you're dealing with experts, you really should think about that sometimes. Sometimes you need an expert to help you understand whether that's, what you're being told is credible or not. But there are times when, because you're familiar with a certain circumstance or a location, you know, an expert's looking at what his opinion is based on an analysis, but you know, if you've lived here for 20 years, you know that intersection operates, and you see what it does, and there's that common, common understanding that you can bring to the record to refute something, or even to concur with something. And if you have your own expertise, I mean, if you're an engineer, you shouldn't, you know, just be an engineer for the commission, you're not. You're not. You're a commissioner. But if you have a certain expertise, and, you know, that can also, you can bring that into the record. We, we have a process where we talk about those in favor, those against, and then generally, there's nothing about that in the statutes. I'm not sure where that came from, but that is how this town is processed. Other towns, I think, do it as well. Good, bad, and different, I don't know, but that, there's, there's, it, it doesn't have to be that way, but that's, that's how we do. We've been doing it. What it, what it does is it helps frame the issues for, against, and general, which is helpful, I think, rather than going all over the place. So, I mean, that, there is some benefit to that. We talked about that the, the public has a right to, to give its say. And you don't want to be looking like you, you know, you want to get it over with and just close it. I mean, you know, I mean, you don't do that. But that's, you know, you've got to be careful. Perception is part of it, too. You know, if the public perceives you as, as not caring about what they have to say, that doesn't help, because that creates animosity and other things that we don't need to see. So, the chairman does a very good job of reading the rules. That's all important. We don't have a sign-in, but we do ask people to come up and give their name. Actually, legally, you can't make anyone sign up, under statute, to speak. They don't even have, they technically don't have to give you their name either. But it's helpful for the record, and it's positive on their end, especially if they, they are against. Again, the chair keeps the control of the meeting. That's a big part of the, the role of the chair. But the whole point is to gather as much information and answer, answer questions, so that you can make an informed decision on all sides. Anyone can speak. You don't have to be from Monroe. So anyone can come and talk. But you, you decide through your understanding of what you hear, whether it's credible, or whether it's pertinent. You know, just because someone comes from anywhere, whether it's from Monroe or out of Monroe, what they say may not be relevant to the project. They might have an agenda from a, a larger scope of something, which is not really relevant to the project, yet they, they come. So you have to decide what's relevant. But the best thing for you to do is, you know, let someone talk. You know, let them, even if they're, you know, obviously, if they're irate or something, the chairman's going to take action and keep them, you know, try to settle down. But sometimes you just let them get their, they just want to get it out, and they go away. So, sometimes it's easier just to let them do what they, they want. We talked about a few other things. Again, it usually ends with the, the applicant, you know, he hears all the commentary, whatever. He may make a statement as to, you know, refuting some of those things from his perspective, and we give him that opportunity. And if you have no more substantive questions, or need a substantive information, that's when you close the hearing. So if you need something more, you would hold it open. That's why there's 35 days. And again, if the applicant doesn't give you what you need, that's why they have 65 days to extend them. So, you know, you have that opportunity to use those things. Once the hearing is, is closed, you know, you get all your referrals, you got all your things, you know, obviously, you don't have any more information. But when you do close it, that's the end of collecting data. I think in your packet tonight might be a couple of letters related to 10 Victoria Drive that were received after the close of the hearing. We didn't give them to you until now, because we can't give it to you something when you were in deliberations. And that's true about, the only thing you can really receive is you can receive a staff report that is based on the record. You can receive info from the town attorney, or whatever attorney is working with you. Again, giving you direction, an opinion regarding the law, but not, neither of us can bring into you, like, a new study or a new testimony. We can just get clarification with the record. But your decisions should be based on the record that you built during the hearing. Because when you make a decision, and if you get appealed, when it goes to the court, the court's going to look at the record. Did the record substantiate your decision? They're not going to replace their judgment for your, you know, their judgment for yours. They're just going to look, was the record saying what you said it said? And if it isn't in there, that's when you get the decision against you. We do all this, you, you know, you obviously take a consensus to close the hearing. We talked about this. Okay, once the hearing's closed, it's closed. There's no reopening the hearing, you know. The only way to do that is to hold a new application. So, in deliberations, again, just those members that were, you know, at the time the deliberation starts, whoever's seated for that will stay with it to the end. You need to make a decision based on the record. The, the thing that's important, you do this, the way we, you know, when I came here, I think the process was, the commission deliberated and decided, and then it got distilled into writing. I recommended that change, that we have a draft in front of you, as we do now, which I think is a much better process, because you give me direction, we write it. If you don't like it, or you want to wordsmith it, you can wordsmith it. That way, when you vote on it, no one can say, "You don't know what you're voting on." And no one can say, "Oh, staff changed it," or "Staff interpreted it and wrote it a different way." So we get away with all of that ambiguity.
You've been accused of that in the past, too.
Yeah. So, having it in front of you, no one can claim those things. It's your decision, so you guys should be comfortable with the decision.
I don't remember the specific case, but there was something that Will was accused of changing in the approval letter. You know, we voted on it. The approval letter was written after the vote, and somebody said that something was, was added into the approval letter that wasn't part of the commission's approval.
Look at Leon tonight.
Well, the other thing it does is not only that it takes that out of it, but it also takes out any legal ambiguity if someone was to appeal. You know, because then you don't have to go prove this is the draft, and whatever, you know, you just go back and tape it exactly. This way, it's there. You've adopted it. That's what it is. So it takes all of those questions right out of there. And I think it's better, too, because you, then, like I said, you have what you have in front of you, and if you don't like the wording, you change it. Because it is your approval. It's not mine. I'll skip over that. So we talked about making a decision. I'm just trying to go fast, a little faster with this. Again, you want it to be based in the record. That's why when we write out the draft, we talk about, you know, what the project is, what they said at the hearing, what they offered, you know, how, how it's consistent with the different findings, making the findings. And, you know, I've been doing this for almost 30 years now. I see my job as helping you not only make your decisions, but to make your decisions stand up, so that if they do get appealed, you don't lose. I think we saw that with Walmart as well, that we had a very good written-out decision. And there was not much that they could appeal, but they didn't win. And I think it's important to, to, to do that, and I see that as an important role for staff, is to give you that draft so that you can, so your approvals can, can stand up to scrutiny. Motions. Obviously, you make motions to approve or deny an application. Your motion should say what it is. Again, the draft helps with that, and Michael's very good at that, you know, reading off the top. And Bill goes through and summarizes it, which is important, so that's somewhat on the record. But again, having the draft is also part of the record, because we keep the drafts in the, in the files as well, the final version. So, when you vote, a majority is simply a three of the five seated members to pass something. Occasionally, a supermajority vote is required. That's when you need four or five. In contrast to you, the zoning board of appeals has a five-member board with three alternates. Everything they do to pass a motion requires four votes. Automatic. So, an example of the supermajority, on a zone boundary change, all people within 500 feet are notified. If, I, I don't remember the percentage, but there's a percentage of the land of the owners, if they submit a petition against it, that forces a supermajority vote of this, of this commission to pass a zone change. And that location. And we actually had, I think we had that once. And it's not that hard to get that percentage, because I think it's like 20% or something. So sometimes it could be two property owners. A tie vote. Let's say you have four people deliberating and voting. A tie vote is a failed vote. It's the same as a denial. Because it didn't, the motion didn't go anywhere. You had a motion, you had a vote, but there was no, no positive outcome. It can stop there. I personally don't believe that's the best way to operate, but if you have a tie vote, you're probably going to have a tie vote, whether it's for it or against it, so it may not matter. But if you're going to have a vote for someone who motions to approve it, and you don't get that passed, it doesn't mean you might not get a motion for denying the pass, but it's better to have an actual motion pass one way or the other. But again, if it, if it is, if it is a tie, it's perceived as a, basically, a negative.
Something I wanted to bring up, a couple slides back. You know, we have 35 days to open and close a public hearing. But sometimes we don't have enough information, and that's when you've heard us ask the applicant for an extension. The applicant can grant us an extension on that 35 days. If they decided not to, we would have to close the public hearing. But nine times out of 10, if that were to happen, and, and we did not have a sufficient amount of information, we would just close it, and then we would probably end up denying the application. They don't have to give us more than the 35 days.
I have a question for you, Will. Let's just take a hypothetical piece of property, like, say, next to Purdy Hill Bakery. That property's been for sale for 20 years. Does that have to go, what determines if that's a public hearing or just a regular meeting?
Well, it depends on what it is that they're doing.
They want to build a house.
If they're building a house, that's an approved lot. So that just needs a building permit, and it's a zoning permit, but that's an administrative permit. The, the time that it was in front of the commission is whenever the lot probably got created, is a subdivision. So that lot, that lot is not an easy lot to build. It's got a lot of well-ins on it. In fact, it has easement across the entire part, almost the entire property from the neighboring lot, subject, which is in its backyard of that wall.
That's why it's one of those for sale.
Yeah, that's probably why no one wants it. It's not a good track of law. But in that case, if you, if you were in a commercial zone and you want to build something, the difference between a public hearing and not would be whether it's a site plan or a special exception permit. So, we have a bunch of site plan uses, like, like someone just wanted to build a retail store. That's a site plan. But if someone builds a, like a, if they build a bank, that's a site plan. If they build a bank with a drive-thru, the drive-thru makes it a special exception permit, because you need a drive-thru to be, having characteristics that you want to deal with differently.
So the goodwill property, that was a special exception. Huh?
Because it has a drive-through.
Really?
The drop-off.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. The, the, the old Good property. Was that because they wanted it to be a special exception?
That was a site plan.
That was a site.
That was only because they needed the, the liquor.
So then that's why.
If they were just going to put a retail store in there.
Then they wouldn't have been up for discussion. That's, okay, got it.
Yeah, they were changing the use with that, someone that required approval from you.
Gotcha.
That they didn't already have.
If we receive information from an outside source, say, it was a concern citizen, they email one of our accounts, is the proper practice just to forward that email to you, and then you put it as part of the public record, or what would be best?
Well, either you send it to means they do that, or, well, you mean during a hearing, right?
Right. It could be before the public hearing, because people could just, "Oh, I know so-and-so's email. Just email it." And the commissioner wouldn't engage with that person, but would take the information. What would be the best practice to do with that?
Well, one, you should tell them not to do that.
Right.
And two, you should probably announce it to the board in the next meeting that you received that.
The best practice is to not open it.
To not open.
And delete it.
Okay.
All right.
But that's not going to happen.
Personally, no.
But it does help to, to close it then.
Right, and that's the same thing with, well, you can't delete a conversation, but someone runs, runs up to you in Big Y. Is the proper procedure just coming in that? No, no, but and they just start talking, you saying, "No." Right, he can't do that. So would you just?
Can people get our town email?
Well, you really should have a separate email.
I don't have a town email. If you have one, it's because you were on a different board or commission, and, and you have one from there.
Yeah, I have a private one I use.
Or we gave it to them. We do, we will give you one if you want one.
I know when, when I first got on the commission, zoning commissioners did not have town email addresses.
There isn't, I don't know if there's a town policy about that, but I will say, you should be careful of using other. Because your email that you communicate with me is subject to F R, which could open the rest of the hearing.
Well, that's why I suggested to everybody that you get a specific email address that you use just for zoning.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a town email, but if you want a town email, I can give it to you.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, that was called to me when I started ZDA, and I said, "Make it on the screen."
Now, there's another question. I was just looking at these performance bonds. How do you determine? Like, I saw one there that, that had $640,000. Is it the size of the project that determines that?
They're different kinds of bonds. There's performance bond, erosion and stabilization bonds. The performance bond is going to be much higher, because they're related to public improvements, like a street, or, or things related to streets, like store drainage and all that. So we can bond for the entire construction of those. Other things, like the private development, we're just bonding erosion and sanitation control and site stabilization. So if they stop building, and it goes for a long enough period, you can call the bond to basically stabilize the property. We're not going to build the project. But if it's a subdivision road, we're going to call the bond. If it's, you know, they start defaulting, we're going to call the bond, and we're going to use, we could use that money to build as much of the road that money will allow us to do, because especially if there's other people that were given, sold lots on the road, and we have a public responsibility to those people.
There's a detailed form that gets filled out. It's all itemized with, you know, 20 different lines for values for different items, and that's where that bond amount comes from.
Right.
The applicant fills one out, but usually Scott does it. Scott also does one. They're, they're not usually the same. The town's estimate is usually higher than, than what the applicant is, is submitting.
But yeah, it obviously relates to the scale, too.
Yeah.
An acre project's a lot different than 10-acre project.
Okay. Next time we have stuff on farms, bypass me, because I grew up in Bridgeport. We did a lot of chickens in Bridgeport on the east side, but no farms.
Yeah, but Ken, you're, that, that doesn't matter. You, you were elected by the people in this town to represent them on this commission, so you, you have to have an opinion on things.
Have a big farm. I don't care. It's like...
Well, the one thing I'd say you have to remember, as Bill said, you know, you're not, you've been elected by the town. Now, granted, one of 10% of the town votes, but, you know. So, you have to understand what people say, but you also have to think about what the overall community would say. So, it isn't just, you know, these 10 people that come up. Now, you know, they came, they took their time to come, but, you know, the reality of the world is not, everyone's going to come out, because they're expecting you all to do what you're supposed to do to something.
You also have to be careful about your own personal situation. Like, you said, you know, somebody might say, "Well, you know, I live next to a guy..." I live next to a guy that has chickens, so I'm against chickens, you know? Well, you can't think that way, you have to think about.
But if you live next to chickens, you, you do understand what the impacts are.
Right, and if you live next door to someone who has chickens and you don't like it, there's very good chances that there are dozens of other people in your situation.
Yes, yes, but I'm just saying you can't be, you know, you can't, just because you feel a certain way because of your particular situation,
Right.
you can't assume that, you know, the rest of the town feels that way. So, you gotta, you know, you have to be careful of that.
But you're supposed to be protecting for everybody, and that's a balance, always a balance.
Well, I was pretty amazed at that public hearing, I mean, I didn't believe that many people came out for that, but.
Well, again, that was a series, in my opinion, a lot of misinformation that was generated that caused a lot of hysteria. Cause we weren't doing, you know, those things that they weren't, weren't, that you were doing.
They may be the best neighbors they've ever had, who knows?
Yeah.
So.
Well, it's like everything, you know, there's always a bad apple that makes it bad for everybody.
Yeah, understood. I got one that lives next door to me.
All right, well, thank you, Will. Anybody else have any other questions? I don't wanna cut anybody short.
No.
No, sir.
Okay. Next up, commission reports. I have nothing new to report. Anybody else have anything to report?
Well, does anybody know about a new planner?
Yeah, are we allowed to talk about it or ask about it?
I, I'm sorry to hear you, Ryan.
New planner.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same thing, is something to talk about here or?
The town has offered the position, and the position was accepted by a fellow named Rick Schultz. He's currently the town planner in Shelton. And I believe he's starting here a week from Monday.
And what does that mean for us? Do you know how he's gonna fit into the?
Um, Will, you're still going to act as, as our liaison, more or less, right? You'll be coming to the meetings or will he be coming?
I have no idea, I've not been discussed.
Yeah, I, I haven't.
I am still the clerk of the commission according to your bylaws.
You're, I'll tell you what.
I am the clerk of the commission according to your bylaws. Um, according to the charter, I'm appointed planning and zoning administrator, there is only administrator in the charter. Um, and I have a job description which is protected by my, but that's all I know. They have not told me what I'm doing or not.
As far as I know, Will will still be attending the meetings.
Is this a new position?
Yes. Yes.
What is the primary? I, is it more, you know, of a large scale, uh, in looking at the, the P O C D, for example? That sort of thing?
According to the job description?
At our level?
According to the job description, as I understand it, is that uh, this position is in charge of the building department, the engineering department, in the wellness commission department, and the planning and zoning department. And he's also the planning and zoning department, which is what I was serving at.
All these departments?
Yeah, he's in charge of all those, everyone, everybody in the lanes with the exception of the health department, reports to this position.
Well, I have sort of an issue with that. Because if everything goes back to one planner, and all these people have to answer to the one planner, then I think that could be a conflict for this planning and zoning commission. And nobody ever talked to us about that. Nor did a lawyer come in here, nor did anybody from the town council, nor did the first selectman come in here and talk to us. That could turn to be a conflict for this commission.
You know what?
Cause everybody has to answer back to the town planner. If you look at the job description, everybody answers to the town planner. We had that issue that they said that Tubal was doing that, and that's how all this stuff changed, and everybody had their own department. And now we have changed it back to everybody answers to one person. That could be a conflict for this commission.
Currently, it's the first selectman?
Oh, wasn't Scott the overseer?
Scott was overseeing from the administrator.
Right.
But currently, every, both his departments answer to the, to the first selectman?
He was doing like a, if I had, if I wanted time.
Well, I'm saying that, I don't think that anybody else has really thought about that, but that could be a conflict.
Well, that's, this is repl, Dan Tubal, he's been gone a long time.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying the way this new position was written, if you read it, every department answers back to the planner. So, that means that if the planner doesn't want the administrator to tell us something, then the administrator can lose his job if he tells us something he's not supposed to tell us.
I don't know.
I don't, well, it's.
Well, I get what you're saying.
You understand what I'm saying?
You're saying that, 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 if the board can't be run.
You can't, no, it's not, this is. I just say, you know, don't be every month with that. They never discussed that with us.
No, nobody ever discussed anything.
No, I understand, and that should never walk in front of this commission before, or bet it out with this commission. So, we could've had our concerns, and you could've had the town attorney come talk to us about it or something like that. That was never done. And, you know, I have an issue that, the way that was done, and I wanna make sure that I put that out there. Because if something happens, I'm just glad that I put that out there before it all comes down. That somebody comes in here and says, well, you know, I went and saw this planner and I didn't get it, and they didn't let me come in and bring my application or something like that, or something like that, that could happen. It's happened to me, it happened to me with Tubal. Personally, my own self told me I could not put a barn on my property, which was a lie. But because you didn't need, for the amount of acres I had, you didn't need, I could put the barn on my thing. But that was done to me, so I'm just telling you that that could happen, and I have an issue.
How did this come about, this new position?
Well, somebody thought that we needed to get one, and we did, but.
Someone?
Well.
The first selectman and, and other.
Town council?
Well, I guess they, they funded it, they put it in the budget for this new position. They put it, actually, they put it in last year or the year before, didn't they, Will?
No, a couple of years ago, they, they funded a union position of a new senior planning and zoning administrator. And that didn't go anywhere, and then they took that out of the budget, and then a couple of years later, they, they negotiated with the union to revamp the town planner position out of the union, and they put the town engineer into the, as a trade-off.
So, this is a non-union position?
Non- administrator. And, and Scott's position is now a union position. And he's no longer the line of history.
So, the county, town council's already approved this, obviously?
Well, no, they, they approved the funding one. And they approved the changing of the, of the language.
They, yeah, they approved the, you know, the money was approved in the last budget, and, uh, yeah, I mean, the.
Yeah, it's been for since.
The person is, for all intents and purposes, has been hired.
No, no, and I have that, but I'm saying, I have an issue that it wasn't brought to this commission in the first place. That, to discuss that you're gonna get a new planner, and this is what his position's gonna be. And we couldn't bring this up, well, what happens with this situation here? Because you have, if you're gonna do all this, you, you're answering to one person. If you look at the way it is, it all answers back to one person. And I don't, you may not think there's a conflict, but I think.
I suggest you discuss it with the first selectman.
I have said that, and it, and it has gone nowhere, so I wanted to bring it up to the commission and see what the commission members have to say.
So, what's his, his role? His role is just to oversee all the departments, or is it also?
He's gonna be a liaison with other departments more, like with, um.
What do you think? You're a lawyer.
Economic development.
Not yet.
He's supposed to be somebody who's talking with them.
Do you think it'd be a conflict?
I, I don't understand.
More of oversight and liaison, not so much.
This is why we shut it up to the town.
Planning.
So, if you read that.
Sounds like.
I, I didn't see.
Anyway, every department answers back to the planner.
To reach out to other towns, to try to.
He is their boss.
Right, but how does that work with economic development?
Are you worried about that being created?
Because of this guy.
Functioning, whereas Will is the nitty gritty.
Want us.
Make sure.
And then he can get fired legally.
Yeah, we, we remain as should be.
And then it should be.
I think, I think the city of Milford functions as such.
I'm just saying.
Wouldn't that seem worry?
But in that case, I think it's actually a building official.
Will's position.
But that's what he'd be, he'd be his boss, but I mean, the thing is, is that, like, I understand what you're saying. I'm saying is now you have one person that controls the whole department. And I have an issue with that, because, you know, each department should be separate. I mean, most towns they are anyway, I think they are. I mean, they may have an administrator that gets everything in order, but that not each department had, has to answer to the, the one person.
Well, in municipalities, everybody answers to the first selectman.
I understand.
There's just now.
But the first selectman is, right.
The fire marshal office too?
Yeah, you have one person, and the first selectman's elected. This guy is hired by the first selectman.
Right.
So, the first selectman can tell which way he wants him to go or not go, because he's hired by the first selectman, and he's done a new job.
Certain positions are made.
I understand that, what I'm saying to you is, I don't know.
Yeah, so he has a planner, what qualifications does he have to oversee the building?
First place. I, I understand what you, what, and I understand, and I know the whole thing, I, I got it. I just have an issue with it, that.
Sometimes I just throw my hands up and.
Well, all right, let's.
No, I don't mean you, I mean just the whole, everything in general.
No, I understand that, but I, and, and, and I, and I see what goes on, and I know what goes on, and I, and I think that this commission should've been involved in the process, and we weren't.
I understand that.
And the town council was involved in the process, but not even in any input from the planning and zoning commission, which I have a problem with that, too. And they should've asked for the input from the planning and zoning commission, but they didn't do it.
So, what do you wanna do about it?
I'm just saying. Well, then what we should do is request for the town attorney to come explain it to us, if there's gonna be any drawback on this.
Well, certainly like a clarification of his role, of the role of this individual, you know? How, how does it, how does it impact the different departments?
But that's just my opinion, I don't know what the rest of this commission thinks, but.
I agree, I agree with you.
It would've been nice, I mean, I think it, it didn't have to.
Nobody has to. But it's, it's.
At least keep us a rest of the process.
Right.
Did he keep you, you were a rest of sort of?
I was, I was kinda brought in at, at the last minute, because I expressed my concerns about what was.
What was saying?
What was going on, and, um, I was asked to sit in on interviews with the candidates. But that was my only involvement. All right, anybody have anything?
So, I mean, it's, 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 you know, we're like the body, and, and we don't even know what's going on, because nobody brought that forward. And this guy is starting on November fifth, I guess, whatever? Okay, so nobody brought that in front of us, so at the next meeting we have, he may just show up, and we would know nothing about it.
Yeah, I don't know what's gonna happen.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but you don't even know, and you're the chairman.
Well.
That's what I'm saying, so it's.
You're preaching to the choir.
No, that's what I'm saying, it, it is what it is.
Anybody have anything else they'd like to share?
No, I think we're done now.
No.
Well, the odd says we're done.
I think we're done.
According to Leon, we're done.